All right. Good morning and welcome to the August 1st Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence.
Yeah, I do have two moments of silence this morning. The Little Town Rancheria lost a tribal elder, Linda Davis-Fryer, on July 19th. Just want to give condolences to the tribe and our families as we go through this tragic moment. And also George Estrella, he is actually a Riviera resident. He worked at Twin Pine Casino as our security manager for over 15 years in our beginning, and he passed away at the age of 84 at the loss of cancer on July 22nd. So just want to give those two families a moment of silence.
Thank you. And then also Pete Saban, who is a longtime Cobb resident and worked for the Alliance Club, was really active in the community for a long time, and he will be having his celebration of life Saturday at the Little Red Schoolhouse. Vice Chair Sigmund, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
Yes, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any extra items for consideration?
We have no extra items.
Okay, then we will move on to our consent agenda. And I have a note that 5.1 will be pulled for next week. Is there anything else that needs to be pulled? Anybody from the public have an item they wish to pull? Anybody in Zoom?
Just a moment. No hands in Zoom.
No hands in Zoom.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.2 through 5.9.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we have a few minutes until our public input. So why don't we just quickly go through our calendars? Who would like to start?
I will go ahead and start.
Okay.
Pretty clean at this point. So just got back from vacation. Well, thank you guys for being here and taking care of the county while I was out of town. So thank you very much, everyone. But back here, obviously, a board meeting today. Tomorrow looks like there is agenda review. If I can attend that, I will do that most likely by Zoom. Thursday, we have a special board meeting for interviews. And then Friday, back on the calendar here with CAO Susan in the morning and really just catching up on everything since I've been out of town and prepared to be back here on the meeting on Tuesday.
Okay. Who wants to go next?
Next.
Okay.
So school is starting, so I gotta make sure in between meetings to get my kids to their orientation next week. That's when it all starts. But in between tomorrow, I am meeting with a group of, between special districts, the city of Clear Lake. We're talking housing and just trying to see how, there's some barriers that have been found and trying to see what it is that we can do to overcome those barriers. If there's anything that needs to come to the Board of Supervisors, I'll elaborate a little bit more once that comes to the board, but just looking to see what's possible. Then a meeting with a gentleman that I met at the, one of our arts sessions that we were at when we were in Texas. So reached out to them, meeting with them about that. Then I have, I'm going to be joining PEG TV to just help out and make sure everything is smooth as we go to the East Region Town Hall over at Moose Lodge on Wednesday. Just want to make sure that our videography moves forward as planned, and so far, everything is ready to go. So excited about that. Then on Thursday, there's so many things that it's tiny, I can't even read it. Oh, Thursday, we have our special meeting. So I hope that we can finish by a certain time because then at 3:00, I'll be here again in the board chambers for a COC meeting. And later that evening, there's a Clear Lake City Council meeting I'll be going to. On Friday, we'll be taking a trip to Napa County with staff and Supervisor Crandall to meet and discuss stuff about Lake Pillsbury. And then on Monday, that's when I start preparing for my PEG meetings, meet with our CAO. And is it this month that we have Middle Creek or is this the off month? I think it's the off month.
I think it might be.
Okay. So maybe I have a Middle Creek meeting or not, but that's about it. And then back here on Tuesday.
Me? Okay. Sorry. There we go. So.
There we go. So tomorrow, I have North Shore Business Association in the morning and then East Region Town Hall, CSA 2 in Spring Valley after that. It goes from like 7:00 to 8:00. Next day, special meeting with the Board of Supervisors. And then Friday, of course, as mentioned, we're going to Napa Congressman Thompson and Lake Pillsbury Alliance Monday. Still looking to see if we do have that. I know it's on my calendar, but I don't know if I wrote it there. I think Marina sent it, so it looks like we do have it. Let's see. And then back here on Tuesday for the board meeting.
Yeah, thanks. I just came back last week from my last installment of New Supervisors Institute with CSAC down in Sacramento. Had a really good time. Because it was the last session, everyone was kind of filling their oats, and it was good training overall and I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to go down there and see the new class of supervisors coming into their own. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the BH staff about continuum of care and some organizational issues there. We'll be attending Thursday's meeting. And we'll be bringing an item next Tuesday to talk about that organizational stuff. Not attending Friday, but just want to highlight that Clear Lake Kids Task Force continues to meet on a monthly basis through that effort led by Department of Fish and Wildlife at the state level. You know, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife is continuing their Clear Lake Kids strategy work, and I just want to acknowledge those people are participating in that important work, even if we aren't seeing action items on that every week before this board. I know they're working very hard on it. I see Friday, Sutter Lakeside will be hosting a barbecue for law enforcement. I'll be attending that. And next week, pretty light, a meeting with CAO Parker on Monday. And that's about all I got right now.
Okay. After today, tomorrow, I've got orientation at high school, and then I'll be at the TID meeting at Boutique. Thursday, here for the special meeting. If I can, I'll go to the Blue Zones meeting at 2:00 if I'm available. Friday, I have Zona Benefit. I have the Hazard Tree Staff Meeting on the calendar off to figure out if that's happening. And then if I can squeeze in a chance to go over to Lakeside for law enforcement appreciation, I will. Sunday is a Fiddler's Jam at Eli, but I think I'm going to be getting ready for school, so I don't think I'll be able to make it this week. And then Monday, after my meeting with CAO Parker, there's an Active Shooter Attack Prevention and Preparedness Event at the Calpine Visitor Center. So I'll be there. And then back here on Tuesday. Okay. So now we can move on to 6.1, our 9:06 item, public input. Do we have anyone here with public input? Is there anyone in the Zoom room for public input?
There are no hands in Zoom.
Okay. Then we will move on to 6.2, 9:07 a.m. item, Pet of the Week, and we have Animal Care and Control.
Hello, my name is Officer Copus with Lake County Animal Care and Control. Today I have brought Kennel 20. His name is Phantom. He's a Chihuahua mix. He's about two years old. He does well with other female dogs, as he came in with one. He seems to love everybody and everything. He'd be good in any kind of home, I believe. If you would like to come see him, our address is 4949 Hellbrush Drive here in Lakeport, right behind the county jail, and our phone number is 707-263-0278.
And he's about two years old?
Yeah.
Oh.
And he's a big old love bug.
So cute. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck, Phantom. Okay. Our next timed item is 9:15. And we don't have anything else to do until then. We'll wait four minutes. You could take a five-minute break if anyone needs to take a five-minute break, and we'll come back at 9:16.
I think that's enough.
We're going to get started. Our last supervisor will be joining us when he's back from his coffee run. We've got 9:18 a.m., and we will move on to our, oh, perfect timing. Our 6.3, 9:15 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of August 2023 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month. And we've got a lot of people in the chamber, so why don't you come join me up here? So this proclamation is from the Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation Designating the Month of August 2023 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month. Whereas human milk feeding is the biological norm for infant feeding and a proven primary prevention strategy that builds a foundation for lifelong health and wellness. Whereas the American Academy of Pediatrics and World Health Organization recommend exclusive breastfeeding for about the first six months of life with continued breastfeeding while introducing complementary foods for two years as long as mutually desired by the mother and child. Whereas the Healthy People Initiative consistently identifies breastfeeding as a national health priority. Whereas National Breastfeeding Month and World Breastfeeding Week provide important opportunities to address barriers to human milk feeding faced by families across the United States and the world. Whereas the vast majority of parents want their infants to receive human milk but face significant barriers in community, health, and employee settings. Whereas protecting and supporting human milk feeding is essential to ensuring infant nutrition security and immunologic protection for Lake County's youngest people. And whereas the consistent and well-documented health, economic, environmental benefits of human milk feeding show that this is an investment that will continue to produce measurable dividends across the country and many times over for families, employers, and the government. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the month of August 2023 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month and urges all citizens to work together to protect, promote, and support breastfeeding and human milk feeding now and for the future. Passed and adopted this first day of August 2023. So I I'm so grateful that you brought this. This is the first time it's been brought, I believe, since I've been on the board. Yeah, so I'm glad that you spoke of the challenges too in this proclamation because it's, it seems like it's the most natural thing in the world, but it's really difficult, particularly if you don't have a support network, if you don't have your family, if you have to go to work. And there's some legislation that's helping with that now. So I know when I brought my first daughter home and she was a preemie, I struggled really hard with this and I ended up pumping for a long, long time. But I went to the classes, I had support, and with my second child, I was able to nurse. So it was, it's a journey. It's harder than a lot of people think, and without the people like you, supporting families, this would be a lot harder. So I thank you for bringing this, and thank you for bringing this awareness. And I'm going to, who wants to speak?
Thank you for sharing that. August is set aside as a month to highlight breastfeeding, the health risks associated with not breastfeeding, and ways in which everyone can promote and support breastfeeding. Our E-Center WIC program supports breastfeeding in a number of ways. We train all of our WIC staff to support prenatal and breastfeeding families. Breastfeeding clients get to stay on WIC longer and receive more foods. We provide free access to certified lactation counselors. WIC offers breastfeeding support by phone or in-person appointments Monday through Friday. And some ways that everyone can support breastfeeding are by advocating for maternity leave and adequate pumping time while at work and school, and by bolstering baby-friendly hospitals. And we thank the Board of Supervisors for presenting this proclamation.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. On behalf of the First Five Commission as well as the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Committee Advisory Committee, excuse me, this is really important for us, and I really appreciate you sharing your story because we do want to acknowledge and recognize that breastfeeding is not always easy, and it does take a community to support, not only for those who may not be able to and want to, and the struggles there, for those who need to return back to work, and just the community at large. So appreciate it. We are hoping to have the Breastfeeding Coalition restarted this month. It's our goal. So look forward to seeing anybody and everybody who wants to join and attend and help support breastfeeding. Thank you.
Well, that's wonderful news. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? You should start sitting in the front row, Elise.
Hello, I just want to thank you all for doing that. I gave birth to a child and I had to go back to work like so many mothers before I was really ready. And even though there are workplace protections for mothers to do that, it's super, super hard. I remember being at work and for whatever, I would leak, you know, and just being away from your child and not being able to do it and having to pump and all of the logistics of it is just super difficult. So I appreciate the support that you bring to the community, and I appreciate the board for taking a moment to recognize this. I think that mothers need all the support that they can get because they're literally the foundation of our future. So thank you.
Thank you, Elise. And do we have anyone in Zoom?
No hands in Zoom.
No hands in Zoom.
All right. Well, there we go. Let's take our picture.
If I can make one comment.
Sorry.
So you mentioned the Breastfeeding Coalition. I know that we do a lot of youth activities, youth events. Young families show up for these events. I know that when I did a Power to the Youth, I would always have, I think it was Jaclyn Lay with Motherwise, that would have a breastfeeding tent. And I just think it's something to think about when you're inviting families, young families, to bring in their children and stuff, to have that at every event so that it's something that's available for people to utilize and find comfort somewhere rather than being uncomfortable because there is some discomfort, whether it's the way people react or the way people feel. But it's just, it gives, it gives an option. And so having that available is great.
Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing that up. We are trying to get it at all of our events. I want to just kind of give a little shout out to Kelseyville Senior Center, who has opened it up for all the Kelseyville events. It is air-conditioned. It is a separate place where you can go and sit and pump. We've had it at the Children's Fair. We're hoping to have it moving forward. It is a volunteer base to host the tents, so that is something that we're looking at. And we're, like I said, hoping to have it at every event.
Thank you. All right, let's, anyone else from the board? Comments? Okay, let's take our picture. Okay, and we have three minutes until our next item.
I don't have to run for coffee. Thank you for waiting the extra minute.
Tried.
Okay, it's 9:30, and we can move to our 6.4 item for 9:30 a.m. Discussion and Direction to Staff Regarding Crafting a Policy Plan for Warming and Cooling Centers. And this is brought by Supervisor Spatier.
Thank you very much. So this is a simple conversation. This is whether or not we would like staff to create a plan. Right now, we do not have a plan when we experience extreme weather, whether that's freezing conditions or sweltering hot conditions. Luckily, we've had a pretty mild summer this year, but it does happen quite often that we go into the extreme 100-degree temperatures. It seems to me, I'll make some phone calls, whether that's reaching out to our admin office or behavioral health and asking, is there a plan? What are we doing? I'm being sent weather reports that this extreme heat is coming in or this extreme cold is coming in. And what it appears to be is we make contact with our departments and see what's possible, what's available, which means that our actions are unpredictable. And it would be nice if we had a specific plan that we could pull off the shelf. That plan, in my opinion, should be when? Is it a specific temperature? Is it a certain number of days that hit those temperatures? Where? Are we just offering up our facilities that are already available to the public and advertising as such? Are we changing those hours? Are we changing the days of availability? And then how? Are we offering water? Are we offering snacks? Are we offering blankets? What are we doing? And I think the warming centers are vastly different than the cooling centers because the warming centers, you'll get the coldest temperatures overnight. So that makes for more difficult logistics. And the cooling centers, you'll get the more warmer weather during the afternoons, which makes it a lot easier since we have open facilities. I do appreciate those that have made the effort to advertise and open up their facilities to all the public in case that they want to utilize those facilities to cool down or warm up. But I would prefer personally a more specific plan. So we're aware of what the plan is. The public is aware of what the plan is, and staff is aware of what the plan is. For some reason or another, it seems, and I do the same thing, that we all kind of look at behavioral health. I don't know how weather phenomenons is a behavioral health issue. I look at this as a county issue and what we're offering to our community. So I know that our librarian gets really involved in it, and so I've invited to see if he wants to be a part of the discussion. I don't see him here on Zoom or unless he's showed, yup, he showed up since then. But I know that he wants to participate in the discussion of creating a plan. I've offered public health because I see extreme weather as a public health issue that we need to look at. Offered social services, mostly because social services has a lot of background in sheltering and understands the logistics of it, and so would be able to provide some expertise in the creation of a plan. And operation of emergency services, mainly because I think that we need a singular avenue of communication to the public. And I also would like to figure out how best to do the outreach to the public. Are we actually reaching the people we're trying to access rather than the ones that already have a situation where they can handle the extreme weathers? Because the press release, I don't know that somebody who is out on the street living without shelter reads press releases on a daily basis to find out where they can get those services. So how are we making sure to do good outreach to reach the folks that we want to help? I do know that when we do open specific facilities, such as during the snowstorm, that we do not see a large number of folks. So I'm not looking to necessarily open new facilities, but I'm just looking for a plan on how it is that we can make sure that people know that there's stuff available for them in case that they are looking for respite or looking for help. I do know that every agency that I've called out so far in the presentation is available here to speak on this. But again, this is not about the level of details. It's about, do we want to ask staff to craft a plan or do we not want to ask them to craft a plan? I didn't want to take all their time up without going through the Board of Supervisors first and foremost.
So I appreciate you bringing this, and I do want to share with you that there's a lot of work happening around this already with the Risk Reduction Authority. And I would like to invite Terry Logston up, and I think we may have Pastor Shannon. Is she in the Zoom room too? Along with our department heads to have this conversation, I think we do need a policy. I think in the short term, we could do as you're asking today, but in the long term, this is a bigger conversation that involves our senior centers, our community centers, our churches, our tribal communities. So there's a lot, it's a lot bigger than the county. And so I'm going to pass this off to Terry to share what we're working on right now.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Let me get this down. As your board is probably not aware yet, because I haven't brought it before your board, but we, I've pulled together all the senior centers, three of the community centers, which is Spring Valley, Little Red Schoolhouse, and the Silvera Center here in Lakeport, and the Lake County Fairgrounds, as well as North Coast Opportunities and Red Cross, to discuss a Community Resilience Center Planning Grant, which is due on September 18th, and its funding comes from the Strategic Growth Council. And so we're talking about the needs of those centers, and it's, at this point, it would just be a planning grant because one of the concerns from senior centers is they have specific funding to serve specific populations, and we don't want to imperil that in any way. But as you're very much aware, we do need a policy and a procedure and facilities for not only warming and cooling, but also what are called clean air days. Because as you know, we tend to have a bowl of smoke whenever there's a wildfire and, you know, pretty much anywhere that would impact us, and then it fills. And our health statistics are such that smoke is very much a huge impact, even if the fire is not here. And so perhaps if I can invite Pastor Shannon, if she's on, to discuss, we're going to tour CRC or Community Resilience Center in the city of Tooe. in the city of Tuolumne in a couple of weeks, actually, next week.
Next week.
And I am here, if you can hear me, I'm not sure. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, fantastic. So the grant that Terry is talking about is the California Strategic Growth Council. And the funding that they're providing allows for both new construction of centers as well as upgrades of the neighborhood-level resilience centers that she mentioned to this group that we have pulled together. What they did in Tuolumne, which was the pilot project before they announced this funding from the California Strategic Growth Council, was they developed two large-scale resilience hubs after a series of community meetings, looking truly at what the community felt they needed in order to be more resilient and prepared for needs when it comes to warming, cooling, and clean air days. So what the Red Cross offered to do was, in a sense, we're hosting a little mini-conference. We have 28 people that will be attending this trip and will be going to view their resilience hub. We'll also be speaking with their county staff that helps to follow the grants that they use, the process that they use, and how they came up with their whole county strategy. And so that tour, it's a four-hour drive to where their resilience hub is. So we'll be leaving on Thursday, the 10th. And then we've got a four-hour program, both education and tour, at the resilience hub on Friday, August 11th.
Great. And one of the things that I hope to ask, I just was made aware or found online yesterday or the day before that Tuolumne County Office of Emergency Service has an extreme temperature contingency plan. And I think it falls under their Public Health or Health Services Department, although it is a plan that their OES department got funding to create, and it's quite robust. So I hope to ask some questions about where they got funding for that, how they got the idea for just that specific type of plan. And it was updated in 2019, so they've had it in place for a few years.
And it's 104 pages. Yeah, so I just wanted to share with you the work that's happening. You know, this is a planning grant, but we are pulling everybody together. I do agree that in the interim, we'd need a policy right now that we can pull off the shelf. We're going into potentially our hottest days, potentially smoke days. And so getting that together quickly is really, is really important. So I think we could definitely use Tuolumne's plan as we build that policy. And I'm in total agreement to pull the department heads together for this kind of interim step. But then on the horizon, taking a much, a broader view of solving this, these problems as they come about.
And just to add, many other counties have maybe not an extreme temperature contingency plan as Tuolumne County has. But I know Sacramento County, Sonoma County, it's not a very robust plan. It's more of when it reaches this specific temperature, this is when we push out this plan. So I think there's a lot of potential copy and paste and reviewing what other people have already done. I just know that when I answer the phone saying, I don't know what our plan is because there is no plan, that tells me that we're missing something. So I love the long-term idea because we do need to have something more robust, especially when, we were very fortunate this year that we opened up the Lakeport Juvenile Hall Shelter during the snowstorm. We took 50 people out of the streets to be able to be sheltered during very extreme weather that we typically do not experience as such that often around here. So making sure that we move towards more long-term goals to ensure that those things can continue and be available or widely available is great. But yes, I do want to make sure we have a short plan, a short-term plan to be able to say, this is the predictable plan that we're going to do every time this type of situation occurs.
Yes.
All right, anybody else on the board? Yep, Sheriff Simon?
It's right behind you. I think it's, having a plan is definitely good. We've all been through, whether it's a warming shelter, I think is more often than not, as we're moving through. I know in my district, at least, the community building there at the senior center, the middle building where we have the math meetings, that's been converted multiple times. And I think for the county to have a plan along with all of our partners in the county is very important. I think also in the Lower Lake community, we have the Lower Lake Community.
Town Hall?
Town Hall, yeah. And so I think if we just look at it strategically, that there are opportunities. I know there are a lot of funds and grants out there right now. I know tribal organizations have an opportunity to look at this too. So I think there will be a couple of opportunities, at least. My tribe will be looking at in our area with facilities that we have. So I think if the community is just working together, that we can come up with it. But having a plan, so we're not all scrambling when these days happen, I think is a real good, important thing. So here to support it, I appreciate the conversation. And I do think having something put together for public services or whoever's gonna be involved, or OES, wherever it falls under, is the way to do it because we have been through these multiple incidents. And having a real defined way to do things are the best. Ultimately, it comes down to manpower. How are we gonna staff those? I know we put that on our, you know, whether it's Department of DSS or Public Health or Behavioral, however we're gonna do that, I think is the challenge. But really coming up with that partnership with Red Cross, some other volunteer agencies are gonna be very important as we move forward. So I think it's a good conversation. But I think we have the facilities to do it around the county. Obviously, bigger events are gonna be a challenge. But just the same stuff we've been getting pretty good at with the sheltering opportunities that we've done in very quick times, I think we can come up with a good plan. So support that for coming up with a plan.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the input on the longer-range planning efforts that are occurring. Supportive of this, if only because these heat events and these cool events are important, create challenges for our communities, but may fall well short of a FEMA emergency proclamation or something like that. So in addition to facilities management, it is a staffing question. And so part of this is planning for our own understanding that if we are to grow our capacity to serve our community in different ways than we have in years prior, that creates not just logistical issues, but long-term funding issues. Who are we gonna, which departments, plural, which staff, plural, gonna be lucky enough or unfortunate enough to get the call when we're popping up these shelters? And just adding to the mix of complexity, PG&E, in theory, during a PSPS event should be standing up cooling shelters or at least have some obligation to do that. But that's been kind of a mixed bag based on their own internal metrics and understanding, you know, what's a heat event that's serious enough to actually pop up a cooling shelter on their end? What is a lesser event where they may actually reach out to the county or the cities to help them trigger their events and support what we're doing through our OES? So it is complicated. So I'm very appreciative that you brought this forward. I do think we can help support OES and those other community planning efforts by doing what we do best and shepherding our own resources to the best of our abilities so that as these longer-range planning efforts come up, we come in ready. You know, we're ready to do our best to contribute to this larger effort. So very much supportive of this. But in addition to facilities, it is about staffing and it is about budgets.
Supervisor Crandall?
So I do know that District 3, and we've talked about different spots. I know commonly in either situation with a, with cooling centers or with warming centers, vice versa, the Habemetal tribe usually opens up. So I think it's, I think, I don't know how we correlate that with county business. I know that sometimes there's been issues. I know, for example, Lucerne Alpine Senior Center and the Moose Lodge with Red Cross and having them qualify to a specific standard. But the reality is, people go to the Moose Lodge regardless. People go to the senior center regardless. And sometimes Robinson when they open. But commonly, the Upper Lake Tribe will open up their Main Street office. So you know, I can, I've been and always do keep in touch with these different agencies in situations like this. I know a lot of times the struggle is generators, but that's mainly for the senior center. And Moose Lodge, I think the others have what they need in that capacity. I know in this last situation with warming centers in January, they had, we had a good connection with PG&E to help with some support when it came to supplies. But this plan will really help with that. So if we have further discussions, I'll invite them as well and see how we can correlate them in and maybe get them to the Risk Reduction Authority meeting so then that way they can, if they're not already coming. I know for sure that the two tribes may, but I can talk to the Moose Lodge and senior center boards and see if they can send someone as well.
Yeah, that'd be great. We are having separate meetings that Terry's hosting for the, for the planning grant. We are also working on getting some of these facilities to have generators all the time, year-round, so that they can be turnkey during any season, if there's a countywide event or a localized event. And then, did you want to respond to anything else that he had brought up?
Not at this point. I think, I think the idea of having a short-term plan is absolutely critical as we work towards a longer-term plan. So kudos.
I did, if I may, Supervisor.
Sure.
One of the comments that Supervisor Crandall made, I think, is a really important part of the plan moving forward. And that is that people are going to go where they feel comfortable, which is why the resilience hub model, I think, is so important for Lake County. It is the having the one central location, like the Tuolumne Hub that we're going to be visiting, that can provide support to all of these little, smaller, hyper-local community centers and getting them what they need. And the California Strategic Growth Council allows for that kind of support, so that's one piece of the strategy. And then the other thing that I wanted to comment on was Supervisor Sabatier noted during the three weeks of snow, the warming center was able to open for people who were living on the street. But Terry, if I might ask you to share a story about one of our Conackdy Bay neighbors who was in a home and really needed our help in a way that we were not yet able to provide?
Sure. During one of the neighbor fests, the first neighbor fest that I did, which was in the Conackdy Bay neighborhood, there was a family of two sisters and a, and a mother. And they lived in separate residence, and they had wood-burning stoves. And the sister with her elderly mother ran out of firewood and couldn't get to the other sister because they had 18 inches of snow. So they burned their furniture to stay warm, you know, starting on day two and three. And having grown up in Ohio and lived through a blizzard, I just never thought I would hear that had happened in Lake County. So having a center or having the communications, I think, is extremely important. People who have the resources to stay warm enough in their homes or generators, that was great. But there's a lot of our housing stock that is pre-1975 and is not adequately insulated, does not have a way, you know, to safely connect a generator. And so this type of planning, I think, is critical for our community. Thanks.
And just to add, in my mind, and if this grows legs and goes somewhere different, that's fine. But in my mind, there's a difference between a state of emergency and just a normal, everyday, below-freezing temperature or normal, everyday, over-100-degree temperature where we're not seeing FEMA, or we're not even thinking of FEMA. It's just, how do we endure that? We have the elderly and young that are the most vulnerable to these things. Hot weather especially is the most extreme that we can endure, and that that causes a lot of fatalities. I'm not gonna say what the number is here because I don't know, but that's the biology of it. So we just need to have a preemptive plan. An emergency is a very reactionary plan to something. We'd have to have a plan that's ready to roll out. But here, this is something we can foresee coming, not like a situation where we thought we would get one inch of snow and then we ended up with two feet of snow, like we did last time, where power was out, nobody could drive everywhere, trees were down. I think that's a different type of situation that also requires a plan. This is more of a, of a kind of an everyday situation where it's not at all an emergency. So just wanted to at least separate that. And I didn't add public services to the list, but it sounds like that would be a good idea to ensure that public services is part of the conversation. Just slipped through my mind when going through that process and did not talk to Director Ewing about this item.
Yeah. Well, I think we just have to be ready for anything. And there's gradients, as we've seen. You know, we have, we have events that don't meet certain thresholds. We have events that go way beyond what we had expected. And we just have to be ready for everything, short-term and long-term planning. We do have some hands up in the Zoom room, I can see.
Just got one more before.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
The other thing I'd like to, in thinking about what you were saying Supervisor Sabatier, a lot of the calls during the snow event was road situations and, like you said, people being, you know, in solitude. And that, that was a lot of my calls from seniors, worried about warmth, of course, the situation with the power out. The road situation's not having a way to access or get to a specific area for the warming centers. But then on the vice versa, when we have an emergency fire situation, I know like at Blue Lakes, it's a choke point. And so there is a back road. However, I know currently, in the near future, there's some work that's gonna be done there. And so some areas will be, you know, not available for, for roads. But also, when it is available, there, we need to ensure that we have some sort of travel-in, travel-out plan. Because I know last time during the complex, it was just kind of very chaotic, if you will. People going both ways and, you know, that, that, if you've been on that road, it's a one-lane road and people are backing up and all that good stuff or bad stuff. So, so I think having this conversation, getting that together, you know, I can talk to some folks. I know people out of Blue Lakes are really concerned about this and some other things, so. But seniors, I know we're on the Area Agency on aging, but that's a very big concern. I know that some of the senior centers are available for them to attend, but getting some sort of medium to where there's a way to get them to where they need to be or get people to them. And so there's certain agencies that can do that, but we just need to get them all on the same page, so.
Okay, we got some hands up. Right, I saw two.
We have Jonathan Portney and Rob Howe.
Okay, Director Portney, I think your hand was up first.
Good, good morning. Sorry for my lack of camera, I'm getting a new setup. But good morning, Board, good morning, community. This is timely, and I'm really glad that we continue to have this conversation. Glad to see a representative of the Red Cross here. As of last week, I'm now on the Committee for Community Health Organization, Active in Disaster. And to hit on Supervisor Simon's, I think it was Supervisor Simon, but, funding. So the Health Department is talking with CE advisory board, Endowment, Professors in Engineering with Mississippi State University to look at health consequences in underserved counties exposed to cascading hazards exacerbated by climate change. And I'm hoping funding can come from there to help support addressing these challenges that we're facing. Supervisor Sabatier reached out, talking about this committee, and I'm all in on it. I think this is so important for the safety of our county, the safety of our residents. And I'm really looking forward to leaning into this. So thank you for the opportunity to invite me to that table. And I'm looking forward to seeing what we can continue to accomplish together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Sheriff Howe?
It says the host is not allowing me to share my video, but can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Do you have a video? Or, oh, you, I see, never mind, your face.
Says the host is stuck. Anyway, just wanted to add a little bit. I've spoken to Supervisor Sabatier a little bit about this. The Sheriff's Office certainly supportive of a coordinated effort. As you can imagine, we get a number of calls during any, any event like this, the heat or the cold, and staffing's always gonna be the issue. We, with the Sheriff's Office, including OES, simply don't have the staffing or the resources, buildings, et cetera, to stand these up ourselves. So any coordinated effort is certainly going to be welcome. The point was brought up a few times, a good point, that many of these, if not most of these, are, are gonna be events that don't necessarily rise to a declared emergency. And so we're not going to have additional staffing or funding available. So I do think it's necessary, and again, very welcome for us to coordinate between the department heads and get something going. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Sheriff.
And then from the public, we have Dr. Rayen Ava.
Okay, go ahead, Doctor.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Dr. Ryan Ava, Executive Director for Sunrise. Just wanted to take this opportunity and say that, first of all, I recognize the importance of having the short-term and long-term plan. And in the meantime, I'd like to extend, you know, our assistance here, both in the short-term and long-term, whether this is the Sunrise, or myself personally, if any, if there is anything that I can do in lending my expertise, you know, help crafting the plan, I'll be more than happy to join the group and assist in any shape or form that we possibly can. I know that we still have, you know, days of summer, you know, with the global warming, the summers are going to get basically warmer, and then our winters are going to get colder. And we're going to see these extreme weathers going, going around, both during, both winter times and summertime. So I'd like to extend our assistance in any shape or form that we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Director Markatan.
Morning, Board. So, yeah, I do agree that this is a need here. You know, with the Area Agency on Aging, we are, are able to participate in terms of what is available through senior centers. And then also looking at, you know, other alternatives. One of the things that we can't really provide is staffing for these. We did do staffing for the warmth centers, and our staff are paid through time studies to their mandated services. But we're more than happy to be involved in the planning, and at some level, in the execution of actually standing up sites. So we do agree, though, that it is a, you know, it's a need in the community, just as much as it is for the warming shelters. And I will, and I will be participating in any plan development that we have moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Director Markatan. Looks like we have someone else coming up to the microphone.
Why'd you choose the seat all the way back there?
I know.
Good morning, Board. Director Jones with Behavioral Health Services. And just as we have been over the past many years, through many disasters, providing support at any type of shelter, or wherever people gather, we're happy to continue to do that. Certainly, behavioral health is impacted significantly by climate crises. And to that end, we are happy to continue to be a collaborative partner in support of our sister departments.
Great, thank you. Do we have anyone else with their hands up?
Tammy Alexe.
Okay. Go ahead, Tammy.
Hi, this is Tammy Alexe from North Coast Opportunities. And I would just like to take this opportunity to promote our CERT teams, our Community Emergency Response Teams. We are trying to grow those in Lake County, and I feel that this is a perfect opportunity for them to be called out as volunteers. Thank you.
Excellent point. Thank you so much, Tammy.
No further hands in Zoom.
Okay. All right, we'll close public input, bring her back to the board.
That sound okay?
Sounds great.
You did great. The microphone's still on. So thank you for bringing this, robust conversation. I would like to add to the list, beyond public services, our climate officer, seems appropriate as this work's already happening. And I, I think maybe open it up a little bit, beyond just county departments, include Red Cross, for some initial conversations as the development of the long-term plan is happening, so that we can also start coordinating with the other organizations around the county.
I'm perfectly fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that we added public services. But the other additions, I think those are partners that are already looking to provide those services. And what better way to make a more robust plan than to all be involved together in the same plan?
Okay, great. So if there's no further comments, I think we've got consensus to move forward with this plan. And so who is leading it?
That's a, that's a funny comment.
Who's going to initiate the outreach and organize the meetings? It's just important.
I mean, I'll reach out to the folks that I've talked about in my district and whatnot, and if there's, I know on AAA, we can see what we can do in our next meeting and get some of them. I mean, I'll help coordinate.
Okay.
With those type of things.
Great. CAO Parker, do you have a suggestion on who should take the lead on this, so we don't lose any time?
I was going to offer our, she seems.
Ms. Logston has graciously volunteered to assist in this matter.
Excellent.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay.
Perfect.
All right, thank you so much. Okay. So that concludes, I believe, our regular open session items. We will now go into closed session, where we have an item 8.1. It says 1:30 PM, public employee appointment.
Yes, we had to accommodate the court schedules of the two.
Okay, so we will come back?
Yes.
At 1:30 PM?
Yes.
Okay. All right, have a great day, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, might as well read it now.
I thought I read it. Okay, and public employee appointment pursuant to government code section 54957B1. I guess I didn't read the whole thing. Interviews for Chief Public Defender, appointment of public, or Chief Public Defender. All right, thanks.